Session for the evening.
And it's only 10:30.
Yeah, that's the Doyle Street, our Doyle-Hollis Park at 1333 1379 62nd Street. Is this Maruz? Who's doing this stuff?
No, actually Ignacio will give you a brief presentation.
Oh, hi Ignacio.
If I stand in here. Good evening, Chair Jeffrey, members of the Commission. This is the Dutro Park, which is on 61st, 62nd, Hollis and Doyle, and I'll make this short. This has gone before two workshops and comments from City Council, the DCC, and the Transportation Committee, and we're making the rounds, getting comments from everyone. We're going to have another workshop on September 7th. And essentially, most of the comments, this park was basically designed by the community. Designers, Gates and Associates took all the suggestions for activities and the layout, put it all together and designed it in front of them. And we have some technical issues to work through, and through the comments you received from Council is that there's real tension between the size of the park and the number of parking spaces. There were 100 spaces there to begin with, and as currently proposed, it's 97. And Council is challenging us to widen the park and balancing that with the loss of about 30 to 40 spaces. And that's, those are the kind of comments we need is, do we need, do we want a wider park, or do we want to retain as much parking as we have there? And we'll do whatever we can. I mean, the streets are already one-way, so there's not much give. It's a small site. And Dave Gates, Gates and Associates will explain the process, what we went through, and we're glad to hear your comments. So David?
Good evening. I'll keep this brief. It's been a long night. But what I'd like to do is walk you through the process we went through. I know some of you are participants to that. And then get your input. We do have one more workshop where we think we have a preferred plan, so we'd like to get your comments on that. We've been to Council, got comments there. So just briefly, this shows where the park sits, right next to the residential area. It's a nice opportunity for sort of one of those green lungs, a lot of users in that area. Next image shows the nature of how the residence and the future parking sits around it. Parking has been an issue, and I think Ignacio explained our ultimate goal on that is to maximize park, basically. Some of the community images are rather nice. They're fresh, they're Emeryville, they're some industrial, new infusion of residential, like you just saw. Next image then takes a quick site analysis. Wind comes from, you know, the west to the east, sweeps through it, basically from Hollis to Doyle. There are existing buildings on the perimeter of it. The existing park totlot sits to the east. Doyle Street is more residential, quieter, it has the greenway along it. Hollis is a little more traffic-oriented and industrial. And what we're trying to do is make the park dominant. There's 110-foot to 148-foot width, so that we had a lot to say about the kinds of uses, what actually happened in there. And you can see that some of the surrounding images, you know, there's the mural that sits not far away, the narrow sidewalks, parking discussion, and some of the, there is a grade change to the site, which can be useful. Next image, this looks a little more closely, and it did evolve a little bit at Council, which I think is a good thing, but the nature of the roadway, 61st and 62nd, which become parking areas with circulation through it. We did look early on at underground parking. The ramp that you see on the Hollis side ended up moving around more to the, on 61st. And you can see that to get under the park, that ramp takes a bite out of the use of the park. Next image, I think, shows again where the ramp would move if you were to go underground. Even if you were only 50 spaces, it still does impact not only the nature of what grows on the lid of the parking, but the ramp itself actually cuts the park fairly severely. Next image then is, the first workshop, we talked about a series of uses that were appropriate in the park. We brought in these visual examples. We had people from the community basically vote on the image that was appropriate, or less so. And then the location, so the upper left, you see the large multipurpose green area would want to be central. And if you look at the play areas, or the amphitheater, or the trellises and the windbreaks, each of those we placed in a different location and had a discussion about that. And the nature of what is the character of Emeryville was discussed at length. So the next image then talks a little bit more about what those pieces could be. Art, obviously, is a critical component. A fountain, sort of a central gathering lunch area was critical. Then the intimacy of the vegetative elements, the picnic areas, the smaller components that would sit within the park, and then, as I mentioned, the trellises in the upper right. Next image we went into then was the placement of these activities. If we know what activities are appropriate, and the visual character to some degree, where do they sit? And each of these A, B, and C, we placed images in those areas. And when we came back for the second workshop, the next image then starts to look at three schemes where the placement became a sketch. And I won't get into detail, but you can see there's a tennis court, there's a half-basketball, there's a bathroom facility, there's the amphitheater gathering, there's the big multipurpose green, there's the front porch, more on Hollis, you know, the gathering area. All of these uses were put in different situations in the A, B, and C schemes. And the intent of this workshop was to cut and paste these. It's not like one scheme was better than the other, but maybe some of the components of A found their way into scheme B. And so basically, the next image then kind of goes through the summary of how those were put together. We literally built this scheme by cutting and pasting physically A, B, and C and putting them together, all the while discussing this. This is the resultant plan that came from that. And I'll just walk through it a little bit, starting from the Hollis side. That's really the front porch, it's the more active side. It has a half-court of basketball on the upper component of the plaza, but it's meant to be really an extension of the plaza. You can play basketball there, but if you had events, if you had farmers' markets or other things going on, the basketball would recede, and it would feel like a plaza. The fountain element is central. It's seen from all the sub-areas to that plaza. The amphitheater faces east, and in a minute you'll see a section, so that the Hollis face, which is a little more active and hard, is actually an edge to the amphitheater, which sits on the east side of the fountain and the east side of that trellis windbreak. So as you step down, facing to the east, you're receding away from the activity along Hollis. The central green is a multipurpose. Basically, it's a big green area looking to the south. So you have seat walls up on 62nd, which are looking into the sun, so even in the winter, yeah, thank you, Ignacio, so the tree line and the seat masses basically look into the sun and the warmth. You see bioswales, some of the C3 issues, which I think we can solve here, are both in those lower pockets, and then as you move to the east, there'll be another. But we want to keep as much usability, obviously, as we can, because as those areas get inundated, they get restrictive in use. The bathroom facility then sits in the middle. What we're calling, it's not a totlot, actually, it's an adventure play area. By that, we mean there are some traditional activities of play, swings and slides, but they don't look like what you see in most parks in the area. Their fresh look, different ways to achieve the same aesthetics of play. And then you see the gathering area, up to the upper area, the picnic areas, which would be intimate in scale, boulders, shade zones, topography. And then if you move directly to the west, Ignacio, you'll see another one of those. Right in there is another picnic area pocket. And they will be salted throughout the park, so they're little escape places to go. With the Council, we talked about widening the park, removing additional cars. We talked about possibly bollards that could block off Doyle Street for limited-time events that might make the park feel stronger. We don't want to duplicate the totlot uses, which sit over to the east with our play, so those are significantly separate in their function. I think the next image then is really this cross-sectional, I think what we do is important out there to create a little interest, so it's not a green tabletop. But at the same time, we've got surveillance needs. We need the police to be able to move through there and see and understand what the uses are, good and bad. So the upper section shows you from Hollis, kind of cutting across to what I would call the front porch, and then stepping up with seat walls and a trellis, and then stepping back down to the amphitheater. Section two shows you the basketball area, cutting through to 62nd, so that there's a screen, and we would have to work on what the nature of that is, but it should be transparent, but a way to contain the ball, but still let it be plaza. And then section three, and, you know, we talked at some length with Council, we want to make it enclosed and not exposed to the street, but it has to drain well, knowing the nature of the soils and knowing how we want to use it, which is continually. So we would work on that, but I don't think it wants to be exposed to the street. And then you just see the nature of where those sections are. And I believe the last image is just the plan, well, there's a quick character sketch of what the fountain could look like. We see it as an artful element, we see it as interactive. You know, you can get your feet wet, you can sit on it. The way it's headed now is it's probably granite or natural materials, sculpted, bathed in water. Not a lot of water, but enough water to create white noise to let the traffic disappear from the space. And it needs to be tall enough to be visible throughout the park, and actually for the motor cars and the people across the street as well to get a strong sense of that. So the last image is really just the plan again, and we're here to listen, fine-tune, make this better. And it will go back, back to the community on the 7th. Community hasn't seen this yet, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. And have you discussed or chatted with the police about the layout of the park and that kind of thing?
I believe it's been run through quickly, but help me with that.
At the DCC meeting, there was no representative of the police, so the answer is no. The police have not seen this plan.
Okay. The only question I have is this. We've, we, there is a potential of late-night use of the park, and I'm just, that's my only concern, particularly the basketball court.
Yes.
So, you know, there is residential all over there, so even if it's just as tame as playing basketball at 2:00 in the morning or something like that, I don't know what contingencies you have, or park management, do you close the park at 10:00 PM, or, you know, those kinds of issues.
It would be unlighted. That question actually came up in the meeting, and the city attorney was pretty definitive that there's no lighting. It's the, the sun is the curfew.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Although my basketball gets better in the dark. You never know.
Actually, Joe, there's a half-court at the Stanford Park as well. It was pointed out during the second workshop, I think the same concern came up, and that's one of the reasons the basketball court drifted over to Hollis.
Over to Hollis, okay, good.
For noise. And from what the residents in that area said, it's policed well, that they don't have a problem in the evening playing.
So it's also one of the parks that's most utilized in the city.
Yep.
You had all these public meetings and all these community gatherings, and it sounds like you got an awful lot of input. So could you describe the demographic that's intend, that from those meetings is intending to use this park?
Varied.
Varied.
I mean, I think we had tennis players, basketball players, people with children, you know, it was a pretty good cross-section. I think we had roughly 40 people at each of the sessions. Good variety of age representation. It was kicked around pretty well. The school district was there in force. You know, help me, Jim, you were there, you probably know the players better.
Originally, it was not very diverse.
No.
I was thinking mostly age-wise.
Mostly age.
It was fairly diverse age-wise. I was at 12 of them as well.
They don't tend to use parks, and...
But there were a couple guys that came and spoke up adamantly about the need for the half-court and compromises around that.
Sounds like it's been pretty well researched. And it's not cookie cutter by any means.
One of the things that, as I was looking at the, the plans again last night, and in particular after the general plan meeting on Tuesday, that talked about open spaces, and specifically about traffic and traffic calming, and one of the things, and the lady who had a lot of experience in Vancouver mentioned that in Vancouver, there's hardly even the most major streets only have 10-foot travel lanes, and frequently, they're a lot less than that. And I notice, you know, and this partially goes to the widening of the park, whether or not we get rid of parking on one side, but partially also goes, very definitely goes to traffic planning, is I noticed that we have, that we're designating 20 feet as the travel lanes. And, you know, I mean, it's partly picking up a couple of feet on each side, but partly just to slow the traffic. I'm wondering whether 9-foot travel lanes rather than 10-foot travel lanes.
Part of that is the backup necessary to get out of your parking stall. So, you know...
Oh, for the diagonal?
Of the diagonal, yeah. I believe you need at least 20 feet to get out of there and pull out totally and then move. But I think the Council was thinking that there might be no parking along the edge of the park.
Right.
And then diagonal, so it would give us more space, but I think we would still need the same backup necessary to safely get out.
Okay, yeah, I hadn't thought about the backup part, but I was, I was thinking about the traffic calming part and the fact that narrower lanes have a tendency to slow traffic, so.
And I think another thing we'd like to do, and we discussed it, is to do some pop-outs. Even if you have parking on the outer side, you can, by eliminating even one car, you can pull two trees out, and that also helps slow down, it reduces the scale, and it'll slow the car down.
Yeah.
I think there are some other devices, paving patterns and textures and different things that can happen at the next design level.
So the person that spoke at that meeting, I think, was Elizabeth McDonald. And she pointed out to the committee that the lanes on the Golden Gate Bridge are 10 feet wide. So at 60 miles an hour, they seem to function fine. And we've got a 20-foot lane here for traveling at 25 miles an hour. So if there's any possibility to narrow those down, that narrowing will slow the traffic to a degree.
Yeah. It's always a balance. We're working in Union City, and actually, we had the same discussion out in Oakley. It's a, it's a balance between safety and pedestrianization. And Oakley is actually putting a 10-foot travel lane in a 45 mile an hour zone with front yards and driveways on 40-foot lots. And I'm not sure that's going to fly from a safety point of view, but it's a goal, and I think people are alert to pedestrianization of things, which is good. So I think that'll get discussed.
Yeah, I think that it's important to coordinate with the fire chief as well. The block of Doyle between 64th and Ocean was designed by Roma to have on-street parking on both sides, and the width, he felt was so narrow after it was constructed that they red-striped the whole west side. And so now we've got parking bays that are red-striped and not usable.
And you got the width.
And it's unfortunate, we didn't get the green area if we were going to lose that.
That's a double loss.
Yeah.
Also, I think we've just learned that there's a proposal coming in to the south.
Right.
And there's going to be a parking need there, and there's also going to be a building height.
Right.
And I think the whole issue of shade and shadow and life on the street there is going to play into what happens down in those parking slash street areas. So, to be determined.
Nice park.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hopefully, we have a chance to come and finish this and get this built, get the site cleaned up. Good committee, we really enjoyed working with Ignacio, and the community was quite good, actually. It's probably as enjoyable a workshops as we've had. Well-spoken, well-thought.
This is definitely one neighborhood that really wants parking, needs it to.
Yeah, it's good.
Is there anyone from the audience that wants to speak on, on the park at this time?
Hi, Liz Altieri for Commodore. I also was at that meeting last night, and I think the thing that impressed me the most was that green is nice, but green for the sake of green is not necessarily the best. And I think the intense discussion at Council about eliminating a third of the parking around there just to have more green maybe should be really thoroughly examined based on who's going to be using that park and who needs to park there. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thanks, Liz. Anyone else?
Not for, from the public. I actually have some specific comments. I actually, I want to refer to the overhead. I kept my mouth shut during most of the workshops.
Well, Jim, this is your park, we're going to name it after you.
I don't think so. Let's see, can I have the overhead, please? I think overall, it's great, David. What you've done is excellent. You captured, I think, what happened in the workshops and what has been talked about for some time. But, um, let's see, probably can't read this very well. Last night, I looked at this and I thought about a couple things. I think the most, the thing that troubles me most about the design and trying to fit all these things is the fountain treatment and the trellis that sits diagonally to Hollis. The fountain sits maybe 15 feet from the curb to Hollis. I think that's going to be a wonderful fountain, but I think it needs to feel like it's the center of this western edge. And, and I really don't think this amphitheater that's going to back up to it will really be used. So we have Hollis, this fairly narrow lunch area with a terrace of steps going up to the trellis, and then the amphitheater right behind it. I think if there's going to be a gathering, a place where you would have some amplified event, it makes sense to do it right in the center of the lawn, use the seating that you're proposing here as the amphitheater, the large open space for that type of use. My suggestion is to move the fountain over a little bit, eliminate the seat wall here and reorient it here along this red diagonal, so that people sit on the seat wall under the terrace instead of looking out at Hollis, they look at the fountain. And it sort of opens up, right now, the amphitheater and the seat wall sort of break up what could otherwise be a very large plaza that includes the basketball court. The back of the, you could still have a seat wall up to the terrace, the back of it could be greened up so that you don't have a large concrete experience from the street. So that's my major concern, is that I think putting an amphitheater here, right next to Hollis, that backs up and forces the seating to look out to Hollis rather than to the fountain is, is a mistake. I don't think we need the amphitheater as a physical structure in the park. I love the idea of the boulders transitioning from the, from the fountain itself as points, seating opportunities, and a way of unifying the whole park. Along the south edge, you're suggesting a rain garden with dry creek and sculpture seats, and you had some photographs of rocks. We had rocks in the tree wells to Kava's rehab of the Brunner's Building, which ended up in the windows. I think the idea of a zariscape there with, um, this kind of treatment is wonderful. I don't think we need the stones, the rock, boulders are great. Something the kids can pick up are going to get displaced. So something with DG, with mounding, with junkus, with, with plants that, that will work and reflect that transition from the open lawn to the sidewalk is, is a good idea. But I just don't like the idea of, of this artificial boulder or cobble creek bed. Going to the, the east edge, there's, I've greened up the frontage here that's proposed as more pavement along the Doyle edge. I'm not sure why this has to be paved here. I don't think it's going to be a place that people pause. I think we can get more green in the area that I've greened up here. And I, I don't understand why we've got a window wall. I'm not even sure what that is, and maybe when I'm finished, you can explain what that is. But it prevents people from coming into the park, obviously deliberately here, but I think that needs to be thought through. Just what is this wall? I can understand a little fence, but I think the wall may be a little bit too much and disruptive to, to the movement out of the residential neighbor into the park. The Roma design actually had nodes of redwood plantings deliberately to get a different tree type, a very vertical tree type, something that goes up 100 feet, or 150 feet, or eventually 200 feet. And that included a node of redwoods at this location here. It would be great to substitute these three trees at the very northeastern corner of the park with redwoods that would provide a vertical element and sort of an identifier to people of where the park is in 100 years. And it wouldn't shade the meadow, it wouldn't shade areas to the south, including the totlot during the, the cold winter months. The restroom at the center, I think there's probably a mixed feeling on the restroom, but if we're going to have a building there, it would be great to have a very small building for rec storage. We could have volleyball use here, just room to store volleyball nets and balls for the rec program would be great. If we don't have that included somewhere, it won't happen. I think the last point is around the basketball court. Right now, there's a fence that wraps it, and I think by looking at your plant list, you've got Harden Bergia proposed on it. Harden Bergia is what we planted along the fence to the pocket park. It forms a very dense screen that we won't be able to see into, and I think that's problematic. I think an alternative would be to have a fairly open fence at the top of the seat wall with a trellis on top, and have wisteria or some substantial vine along the top of the, the trellis that, that provides some green, but still allows us to see into that basketball court, because I think that could be problematic. I think the last point is your planting list is a little bit sparse. We worked hard around the community garden and other points along the greenway to expand that list to a real diverse palette, things that are also low-maintenance, that are perennial, that survive the potential trampling and other high use here, junkus and carricks and yarrow and, and other things that could be really successful here. But overall, it's going to be really exciting.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, any other comments? No comments? I think Jim pretty much summed it up here.
Turn that, try against them.
Oh, yeah, give it back to them. Can you talk a little bit about the fence before you take off?
Yeah.
And what your, your idea of the window wall was?
Actually, I'd like a copy of your sketch, too, if possible.
You can have it.
Perfect. Yeah, I think, a little bit, just, and tell me what you think. I agree with you on the fountain. In fact, we've already, we've gotten out of that CAD drawing, and we've done a softer drawing so that it actually works better, the geometries work better. The thought on the small amphitheater was that, that it's kind of a lunch area, it's close to the fountain, but it's somewhat protected from the street, whereas, and our other sketch, and, because you're totally right, the big event is going to happen in the, in the meadow. And we actually have more walls, and they're a little closer together, so it is, you can't actually sit without getting your rear end wet on the lawn for events. So it's, we had a small one for the puppet show and the kind of pickup discussion closer to Hollis. And the fountain, actually, we've already migrated it over, that's totally correct. The trellis was there as a wind block. I'm not sure it's needed, but that was on a line so that you angled back as you're driving on the road, you see the fountain. So when the fountain migrates back, the trellis pulled back with it. The trellis was a... The trellis was a windscreen slash sunshade control, you know, that sort of gave you choices to sit facing the front porch and all the activity, or you could face the green side, which would be quieter. You're right, you're still going to have acoustic intrusion, but it was kind of a different sort of gathering place. We could go either way. Another mistake, I think, in the drawing is the wall separation to the basketball court sort of fragments that area from the fountain. And your sketch actually solved that a little bit by pulling the fountain over, so I agree with that. I would almost like to not fence the basketball. I mean, used to play ball, I mean, if you're very bad, you're going to put it in the street, but most people playing there are probably going to pretty well control it. You could go with a low seat wall and a small hedge, allow visibility in for the police.
Right.
To me, that's a better solution, yeah.
Or you'd probably have to have some kind of fence in back of the backboard.
Yeah, I think...